And Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Roll call for tonight's meeting. Barnwell?
Here.
Kreis?
Here.
Calhoun?
Here.
Osanga?
Here.
Finch?
Here.
Wells is excused, and Mayor McClure?
Here.
Okay, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We now have citizen comments on any subject except items scheduled for public hearing. We do have one public hearing item. You'll have three minutes to speak on any topic. There's a total of thirty-six minutes for this time, and it starts with a sign-in sheet, but if you didn't sign in, we can do a show of hands and I'll call on you. And when you come up, we need to have your name, and if you live inside or outside the city limits, just for the record. Mr. Clerk, who's signed in?
So there are two people signed in to speak. First on the list is Bruce Jaffa.
Bruce? Even though we know who you are.
Got it. Bruce Jaffa, outside the city limits. Mayor, cops members, administration, thank you for your time. First, I'd like to call our attention to a matter of humanity. Last night I was caught in a traffic jam. A person lost their life on the highway. Seward recently has had sort of a rash of people, fatalities, the woman in the bay, several people in Ileek. I think for whatever lofty goals we have in our life, I remember when the Pledge of Allegiance included "Under God." Not all of us may think that way, but I think we all should appreciate our humanity and take joy in our brotherhood. I'd like to apologize to council. I was not able to make the last meeting. I did watch your discussion. You spent ten minutes on a topic which I'm sorry you had to spend that time. PACAB had asked to develop a committee. The reason for that was partly because of the growth of Open Meetings Act. In the past, PACAB has had small committees. Lord Snyder and myself were on an alternative energy committee that we were able to just formulate under our own rules. But I think as we understand the Open Meetings Act and we all try to comply with that, it adds a burden, and if that's the case, we just have to rise to that. So the effort to create a committee for alternative energy that you reviewed at the last meeting was nothing nefarious in that. It was just an attempt to try to abide by the rules. And we'll wait till fall and re-initiate the effort. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Mr. Clerk?
Next on the list is Brad Snowden.
Buddy here. My name's Brad Snowden. I live within the city limits. Is that enough?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I'm here for several reasons, but I think I want to do the most positive one first. And the most positive one is our airport and stretching that out to seven thousand feet. That is Seward's future. We could justify it today with the cruise ship industry and the demand that would be there. That being said, I hope we don't forget that, because that should be our number-one target for our future. The next thing is two words called arbitrary and capricious. How you deliver something arbitrarily and capriciously? I'd say that I've had some difficulties with that delivery system in our city. And that being said, I prefer, rather than go into the details, just that you folks take a look around and see what you observe. As you're doing this, I'm going to ask for a specific look into. Roughly about six months ago, my account, I was told by the person that collects for your electric utility bill, that somebody had made an anonymous payment to my account of approximately $1,500. I don't know anybody that likes me that much, but I did call up my daughter, thinking, well, maybe. No. So where that came from, I'd like somebody to maybe find out. Where did a $1,500 payment to my account come from? I don't know, it's kind of numerous. And then this utilities is really bothering me, the way it's being delivered. And what is the policy and procedures for how we, the city of Seward, deal with that? With late payments, with how long they, numerous items. But is there a policy and procedure in place? And if there is not, may I suggest that we have one? That would help keep things fair and equal. Those things being said, I think that's just about it. And that being said, that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brad. And that was all signed in?
That's correct.
Okay, is there anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up.
My name is Ristin Casagrande, broker of Coastal Heritage Properties, manager of Brown and Hawkins Properties inside city limits. I'd like to let council and administration know that as of Friday, Phase One of the Brown and Hawkins Fire Suppression Project was complete. We anticipate submitting final reports and receipts for reimbursement to the city within the next week or so. We are beyond grateful for the city council and administration's overwhelming support, and we thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ristin. Anyone else wishing to speak at this time? I'm assuming there's no one in the hall at this point? Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'm not sure what that is, but it's pleasant. Okay. We'll move on to proclamations and awards, and the first is proclamation for... No, why? Oh, no, we'll move on to... That was my one mistake for tonight. Approval of the agenda and the consent agenda. I'd need a motion and a second, please.
I'll move for the approval of tonight's agenda and consent agenda. A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any changes that people would like to make on the agenda?
I do.
No, that's... Councilmember Barnwell?
Yeah, I would like to pull Resolution 2024-033 off consent agenda.
Okay. And I will move it down to new business before the discussion item?
That is correct.
Yay, you did it right.
Got it.
Okay, any other changes? Councilmember?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to postpone ordinance 2024-031.
We'll wait on that until after the public hearing. Any other changes? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, voting on the approval of tonight's agenda and consent agenda as amended. Kreis?
Yes.
Finch?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Osanga?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
Okay, your agenda and consent agenda have been approved, and approved on the consent agenda was Resolution 2024-031, authorizing the city manager to purchase from Anixter electric materials in the amount of $233,692.38 plus a 10% contingency and appropriating funds. Resolution 2024-032, authorizing the city manager to purchase transformers from General Pacific in the amount of $128,409 plus a 10% contingency appropriating funds. Resolution 2024-034, approving a horizontal layout for the printed version of the official Seward zoning map, which will display all zone lands within the Seward city limits, and the approval of the May 28, 2024 city council meeting minutes, and to reappoint Mary Anne Benoit to the Historic Preservation Commission with a term set to expire May 2027, and to reappoint Donna Walker to the Historic Preservation Commission with a term set to expire in May 2027. And that was your consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. And now, we come to proclamations and awards. And the first is a proclamation for Flag Day, and I've got my assistant over here to read it.
Whereas Flag Day is celebrated on June 14 in the United States, and whereas this commemorates the adoption of the flag of the United States, which happened that day by resolution of the Second Continental Congress in 1777, and whereas in 1916, President William Wilson issued a proclamation that officially established June 14 as Flag Day, and whereas in August 1949, National Flag Day was established by an act of Congress, and whereas the week starting June 9 is designated as National Flag Week, and whereas many citizens have died protecting it, and whereas our flag is representative of our independence, our unity as a nation, and has a proud and glorious history, now therefore, Sue McClure, mayor of the city of Seward, hereby encourages all citizens of Seward to fly the American flag with pride and observance of Flag Day, Friday, June 14, and show our respect to the flag, our culture, our nation, and its designers and makers, dated this 10th day of June 2024.
Thank you. And will you hold on to that at the Legion, perhaps?
We will.
Okay. Thank you very much. And now I have another proclamation, and this is rather lengthy but important. This is a proclamation dedicating June 22 as Lee Polesky Day. The proclamation, whereas Lee Polesky was born in Manila, Iowa, July 17, 1937, and whereas Lee enlisted in the army at age 23 and served overseas in Germany as a specialist with technical skills in the intelligence division and was honorably discharged in 1963, whereas in July 1964, he accepted a job teaching high school in faraway Seward, Alaska, only four months after the devastation of the Great Alaska Earthquake, and whereas he taught social studies, photography, Spanish, and history for the next 26 years and retired in 1990, and whereas Lee joined the Fledgling Resurrection Bay Historical Society in 1966, and within a few years was elected president, whereas Lee became an integral part of the community, also serving on the Seward Hospital Board, the Community Library Board, and the Alaska Gold Rush Centennial Commission, and whereas by 1971, Lee had a volunteer job as director of the Seward Museum, then located in the former post office on Third and Jefferson below the present senior center, and whereas for the next 41 years, Mr. Seward Museum curated the collections, created interesting displays, manned the front desk, developed programs for school groups, answered endless questions from visitors and researchers from all over the world, and whereas Lee received the Seward Historic Preservation Award twice and the Alaska Historical Society and Museums Volunteer of the Year Award for the state of Alaska, and whereas in the late '70s, he became a founding member of the Seward Iditarod Trailblazers and continued to serve on that board as historian, newsletter editor, and producer until his passing, and whereas Lee was a legend for walking everywhere and created the popular Walk the First Mile brochure along the bike path to encourage others to walk and learn about the Iditarod National Historic Trail, and whereas he and Dan Seavey gave countless public educational programs about the historic Iditarod Trail to teachers, schools, organizations, inspiring generations of youngsters and their adults, and whereas Lee researched archives, microfiche files, and old Seward newspapers for nuggets of interesting information, and then created fascinating bits of history videos, and organized and compiled over 3,000 obituaries for the Seward Obituary Index, and whereas his interest in Seward obituaries led to the tradition of his famous Seward Social Cemetery tours starting in 2006, and whereas Lee's last cemetery tour on June 21, 2023 was People Who Should Be Remembered, and whereas Lee died at home, August of 2023, at the age of 86. Now therefore, I, Sue McClure, mayor of Seward and former high school student of Lee Polesky, hereby declare June 22, 2024 as Lee Polesky Day, in honor of a beloved Seward treasure who diligently served our community for 59 years. Lee is a person who will be remembered, dated this 10th day of June 2024. Signed by myself. And I'm going to keep this. His niece and some family will be here for his funeral and for a celebration, which I'll speak to later, and so I'll give this to the family. And thank you. And next is the city manager report, and we have our assistant city manager here to give the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You guys do have, obviously, the report in front of you, and the only thing I'm going to really highlight, which is not the report, is I just want to say thank you to the library staff, the police department, and the fire departments for kind of the professional and efficient response to the bomb threat that we had on Saturday, which is really unfortunate, but they responded very well. And I know the investigation has kind of been turned over to the federal level at this point, but it was just, when you're dealing with that situation, it's one that we don't want to ever deal with, but everyone handled it really well, and I think we're thankful for those people that are competent to do that in that type of situation and make sure everyone's safe.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there questions about the city manager report? It's in the packet, by the way, on page eight, rather thorough, and it is posted on the website always, too, so if you need that. No questions? Okay, we'll move along to the city attorney report. You'll find on page 15, and we have our attorney right there.
Hi there. Good evening. Look at the reporter here for a second. So a couple of big ones, the Chugatch electric rate case. It seems like our... The day-to-day phone calls over the last few weeks seem like they've been relatively quiet, but we're working on a couple of bigger things. One is the Chugatch rate case, that Chugatch is increasing rates all across the service area, including what amounts to, I believe, is a 12% increase on the wholesale rate to Seward, and that is set for a month-long trial and coming right up. And Cody George is an associate in our office, and he's been working that pretty hard, and it looks like it's going to trial. So we'll be advocating, we have an expert who... It's largely done through experts, and there's not much else we can argue about as far as rates. To say that essentially the methodology leading up to their... That they use to justify the rate increases is not right. It should result in something smaller, but the 12% increase is something like $340,000 a year, I believe, so any decrease if we can achieve that is significant. So that's something that's coming up over the next month or two. And another thing that is leveling up is the trial over the Mount Alice campground and Mr. McDonald that is set for a trial on June 19. It should be just like a one-day trial, but Alex Foot in my office is working pretty hard on that one. The court did recently grant a notion. There are a number of issues in that case. One of them is regarding a $4,000 suspended fine for... In 2022, there was an agreement signed that said, don't operate in 2023, or there will be a fine imposed. We filed a notion saying it was pretty obvious there was operation, so we should be out the $4,000 in an effort to limit the issues at trial, and that was just granted. So there's some progress there, but still set for trial. So those are a couple of the bigger issues. And so if we're a little busy over the next couple of weeks, a little slower to respond is because one of the attorneys or two of them are kind of tied up with those bigger matters, but it shouldn't really cause much of a concern. I mean, the fourth floor, otherwise we'll cover it, but we are busy behind the scenes with Seward issues.
Any questions for Mr. Severin? We love having you here.
Thank you, I love being here.
I like seeing your name on the banner there, whatever the header, too.
Yeah, that's a...
That's new?
It is new, yeah. It's been in the works for a while.
So that means you're a part?
Yeah, I'm a boarder, and I have been for a while. We just didn't change the name.
Didn't change the header.
It was wildly inconvenient to do so, because you've got to change all the... Well, actually, along those lines, we also changed offices after many years. We're hoping to expand, and our lease was up, so we've got a much nicer office if anybody comes to Anchorage to visit, but so we needed to change the name in conjunction with the take care of everything at once, so.
Well, congrats.
Thank you.
Okay. No questions? Okay, we'll move on to presentations. We have two, and the presentations do have a 10-minute time limit generally. The first presentation is a Historic American Buildings Survey plaque involving Brown and Hawkins and Iris Darling, and I think Iris is the one to come and speak to this. It's very exciting stuff. And welcome, former councilwoman Darling.
Thank you. Thank you. It's good to be back in the council chambers. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, my name is Iris Darling. I am the proud owner of Brown and Hawkins Historical Buildings, located in Seward's historical downtown. I've written something up, but it doesn't really apply now that I'm here. How's that? But I have with me three very special people to the city of Seward, and I'd like to introduce each of them. The reason we asked to be included tonight is we want to present to the state and to the city of Seward a copy of this HABS survey that's just been done by the National Park Service. For a building to be selected by the Park Service to get a national HABS study on it is a real honor. It's an honor for the city, it's an honor for the state, and it's special. And I have with me one of the people I'd like to introduce right now, and let him explain to you exactly what a HABS study is, and I have with me Mr. Grant Crosby, senior historical architect with the National Park Service, and he will let you know exactly what it means to the city and to...
Grant? Sure, thank you. Is standing okay?
Yes, you can sit.
You want me to sit?
Oh, you can. You can.
I can stand really quick here. Can everybody hear me here?
Oh, I can get up.
I can kneel. Just use the spot. There we go. Why don't you stay seated? Why don't you stay seated so we can...
There you go.
There we go.
You're speaking plenty loud, so...
Thank you very much, Iris. Grant Crosby, historical architect with the Alaska Regional Office of the National Park Service. I do not live in the city of Seward, I live in Anchorage.
Shame.
Shame, I know. But maybe I'll move, who knows? The Historic American Building Survey, that's what HABS stands for, H-A-B-S, we're federal government, so we have a lot of acronyms, is a collection that started in the 1930s during the Great Depression, and the intent then was to employ out-of-work architects and draftsmen, and they sent people out to document these significant structures around the United States. And the collection continues to this day, and in fact, there's two other programs that join it, the Historic American Engineering Record, HAIR, another acronym, and the Historic American Landscape Survey, so the HAWS, HABS, HAIR, HAWS is the program, and it makes up the Heritage Documentation Program. In that collection, there are nearly 100,000 sites that have been documented. So the Brown and Hawkins now joins that collection, which is stored in the Library of Congress in perpetuity. We were talking on the way over here, and Iris mentioned, hey, this thing will be in the collection for 100 years. I said, well, it's going to be a little bit longer than that. So this set of drawings is now documenting the building to within one-eighth of an inch accuracy, and the way that we did that was through high-definition scanners, and that is input into the computer, traced, and these drawings are produced, and you can look through here to see how accurate they are. And one of the reasons we recommended doing this is because when Iris was trying to put the fire suppression plan and the fire suppression system into the building, the contractors were coming back with very high numbers. We just don't understand the building. And so that's what we said, let's do a twofer, let's document the building, get it into the Library of Congress, but more importantly, let's get these drawings in the hands of the contractors so they can act where they understand the building, and then put a more reasonable price together for fire suppression. So it's a pleasure for us to be included in this project, and this will live in the Library of Congress for the long term. One last component, a HABS study includes three components: measured drawings, large-scale, large-format photography, and then also narrative history. So that trifecta is now in the Library of Congress.
I might add, the history is long before my time, thank goodness, but it details everything that's ever happened in that building. I was astounded. Everybody's touched the building practically noted in that study. It's 100, 200-some pages.
Yeah, it's a very good document.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
I also have with us today... Let me just collect my thoughts here. Without the help of the National Park Service, the state of Alaska, we would not have been able to maintain the same integrity over the years that we have. These people love history, and Seward really has, is rich in history, as you well know. People come here for the history as much as they do for the benefits. So anyhow, I'm proud to have them with us tonight. I have with me also Maria Lewis. She's a CLG program coordinator for the Alaska State Historic Preservation Office, and the CLG grants is one that, thank goodness, you all approved for me on this fire suppression system this year. And it does, it's made to the person or the building, but it has to be included, the money has to pass through you all, and you just have to approve it, and you make usually 10% or something to do it. So it's a good deal for you, and it's a good deal for Seward, and it's a good deal for the people that need it, own the building. So Maria, would you like to stand?
Yeah, sure. Hi, Maria Lewis. I'm the state architectural historian and also the CLG coordinator.
And she's been very special to be on board with everybody. She's meeting this time with a church. We're trying to help the church get on board with a grant, and so, you know, there's a lot of opportunities here for people that own the older buildings to bring forth some help. And I also have with me Judy Bittner. She's the chief of Alaska State Historic Preservation Office. She's the lady that is in charge. And Judy, can you elaborate some of the grants that are available for the people in Seward, and I hope we have some people out there looking that might be interested?
Yes, my honorable mayor, city council member, and city manager. Judy Bittner, the State Historic Preservation Officer, and I was looking at the history of Seward as a certified local government and the grants that they have used over the years. Seward became a certified local government in 1992, and since that time, there have been 40 grants, are both certified local government grants and also just direct grants to other recipients, and they, since that time, and they have included grants for historic preservation planning, database inventory of historic sites, interpretive signs and digital tour guides, creating a Seward Historic Landmark Register, planning for Seward Centennial Celebration, restoration of Hoben Park, historic preservation training for staff and commission members, national register nominations, building assessments, and restoration of historic buildings. And we hope that Seward will continue to be active grant recipients or applicants in the future, because I think it has helped preserve and interpret and share Seward's history with its residents and visitors.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to have you here.
We have an excellent historic commission now with the city of Seward, the people on it, and I see you approved Donna Walker tonight, or she's up for approval. But they're just great. They're just great, and they're working hard in the resurrection without the help of the Resurrection Bay Historical Society, the commission, and all these people. Brown and Hawkins would not be the chosen one right now, but it is contributing to this community for a long time. And without Ristin Casagrande, I couldn't do it. She manages all of our properties here, and I did have a little bump in the road, lost my better half, but we keep going. The Brown and Hawkins group's been here since 1903, and we're still here. And it's good to be back in town.
It's good to have you here.
these with her, for the state of Alaska. And also, we want our mayor, this mister, madam mayor, for you to have one for the city of, for the city. So I'd like to present those to you.
So, if you want to.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
And we'd like it to go in the coffers for 500 years.
Well, beyond that.
It'll stick around. This is amazing. I wasn't sure the keys were acting me on that. And the other fire suppression system is just about in Brown and Hawkins, so we're moving with that. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Iris. It's really good to have you. That's, that's really wonderful. I think everyone knows I'm currently President of the Historical Society, so this is very exciting in that regard also. It's all interrelated. Okay, our second presentation, it's not quite of the same ilk, but it's a presentation on the Water and Sewer Rates Study. And we have Brian Metz on the phone for this presentation, and we also seem to have our Public Works Director coming up to the microphone, so do you want to introduce Brian and say some stuff first?
Sure, sure.
Okay.
Thanks for hanging in, Brian. And Doug Schessler, Public Works Director here in Seward. And we have, Brian is doing the Water Sewer Rate Study for us. It's been a long time going on, it's been since 1993 since we had an updated, good study on it, so it's been a long time. But then COVID hit us, the whole thing, so it's been working through. So I'll let Brian, and thanks, Brian, for staying up. He's actually in Florida calling in, so he's probably about 11:30 over there, so I'll let him get with it and introduce what he's got for the Water Sewer Rate Study that you'll see on the TV up there.
Thank you, Doug. Good evening, members of the council, staff, and members of the public, just going to give you a brief update on the Water and Sewer Rate Study. Pull up to slide two. So the city's last formal Water Sewer Rate Study was completed about 31 years ago, and the current rate study began in 2019, but has experienced delays due to COVID-19 and city management changes. We've been evaluating residents' efficiency and existing rate structures, and we've recognized the need to fund replacements of aging infrastructure and to modernize the Water Sewer Rate Structures. The next slide. So as the head of the water utility, your utility provides an essential service on a continuous basis, highly regulated, you have permits that require satisfactory operating performance. There are common towards enterprise funds, which are operations, meaning that operations are primarily funded through user rates and fees, and these are capital-intensive businesses of the city. Next slide. There are a lot of different things that go into your user rates. We've prepared multi-year projections, things include operating expenses, debt service, issue of capital, administrative transfers, all these things comprise elements that we need to recover through our user rates. Next slide. So the first issue is public health and safety. Utility infrastructure is often outside or out of mind, but the capital needs in Seward are, you have substantial renewal and replacement needs that are basically utility assets that have reached or exceeded their useful service life. And you can see some very choice pictures here of, you know, some of your, you've got a lot of infrastructure that looks like this. And a key takeaway is that when you have infrastructure like this, it's not going to go away, but it'll just be more expensive to address in the future. Next slide. Certainly, you've got a lot of old water and sewer mains that break frequently, they cause service interruptions, and utility workers often have to rip up roads to address them. Next slide. The revenues under existing water and sewer rates don't recover, don't cover your depreciation expense, sorry, or your, next slide, on slide seven. Don't cover your depreciation expense or your annual wear and tear on the system. And so that's a sustainability issue, is your depreciation expense doesn't, you know, is based on historical spending and doesn't consider the replacement cost in today's dollars. So there are like, as far as, next slide, slide eight. So as far as critical capital needs, we've identified about $6.2 million through 2029 for the water system and about $7 million for the sewer system. We have recognized quite a bit of grant funding, but a lot of renewal and replacement needs need to be funded on a cash basis. Next slide. Another issue is substantial operating expense increases. Utilities have a lot of limited control over a lot of operating costs, like electricity, chemicals, repair costs of parts and supplies, driven by global market forces. Also, the city had a couple years ago pay study to help retain its existing staff. There are nationwide issues with filling positions and keeping employees, and a well-trained, experienced, and sufficient staff is critical for effectively running the utility 24-hour a day, 300 to 65 days a year. And due to the regulatory environment, utility costs normally increase at a higher rate than CPI. Next slide. So annual inflationary rate adjustments have not kept up with utility cost increases, and this is a sustainable, sustainability issue, and we probably need to look at revising the existing indexing methodology because it doesn't seem to be keeping up with your costs. Now, here, this chart shows that your cumulative water sewer rate increases since 2019 have been 7.9%, but your operating expenses have increased by 30, 38%. And it's important to note that when you're talking about inflation, permanent increases in costs must ultimately be passed through the customers through rates. Next slide. So the current financial sustainability issues could negatively affect the ability to debt finance critical capital needs. Lenders want to see that all rate adjustments needed to make the debt payments have already been adopted, and a 100% page of funding of a critical capital need would require much higher rate adjustments. Next slide. Another issue is outdated rate design. No other survey you, Alaska Utility has declining price blocks for metered service, where basically the more you use, the lower price. That doesn't promote water conservation. And basically, this rate structure is stuck in the 1990s. And to be consistent with the practices of other Alaska utilities, we're proposing a multi-year plan to gradually transition to a single volumetric rate for all usage. Next slide. Another thing is, you've got a pretty, unnecessarily complicated rate structure where some unmetered service is charged on an equivalent residential unit basis, and the methodology may not reflect the true demand for service. For example, the existing equivalent residential unit methodology for unmetered non-residential service, for restaurants or bars, you have a base charge of two ERUs plus for every eight seats, in excess of eight seats, that's an additional 0.5 of a equivalent residential unit. And why eight seats? Why not seven seats? Why not nine seats? It's kind of, this, you know, this kind of methodology may not reflect the true demand for, on the, for the, for service on the water system. So we have a proposed plan to require all non-residential customers to have metered service, which is a more equitable approach, and everyone will be paying for their proportionate share of the demand. So, next slide. Another thing is, the current rate structure has minimum charges where you're basically, regardless of how much you use, you pay a certain minimum charge. This is not, this is a structure that's not really supported by the American Waterworks Association, which is kind of like the authoritative resource on waters, for water. And so we have a proposed plan to have a monthly base charge for each meter size, and ultimately, as I mentioned, a single volumetric rate for all usage. Final slide, moving forward, slide 15. Basically, we're, we've got some issues to solve, and a proposed rate and financial plan will be presented to the City Council within the next few months. And that concludes my presentation. I'll look if anyone has any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, are there questions you wish to ask at this time? Or comments? No? Okay, that seemed very thorough, and more to come, huh? So, thank you very much, and you can sign off, and I know it's late there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we needing a break, or are we good to keep going? Good to keep going? Okay. Our next, and thank you all for coming. See, people leaving now, I was going to give you a chance to leave, so.
Where are you really?
Thank you. Although this is scintillating stuff. So what we have next, because what we have next is our one public hearing item. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm correct.
That is correct.
Okay, so we have a public hearing on Ordinance 2024-009. Mr. Clerk, would you please read that in for the record?
Ordinance 2024-009, Amending Seward City Code 15.10.226, Land Uses Allowed Table, Prohibiting Cluster Subdivisions in All Zoning Districts.
And you'll find this on page 72 of the packet. I need a motion to enact, and a second, please.
I'll move for enactment of Ordinance 2024-009.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Administration, you get the first shot at this.
I'll have Courtney Bringhurst, the city planner, come up.
And then we'll do the public hearing.
Good evening, City Council. This is an interesting resolution and proposal by the Commission to strike cluster subdivisions as an allowed use in our land uses allowed table. I think it reflects primarily just the unique situation of Seward. The Commission fully acknowledges that cluster subdivisions are a valuable tool to provide solutions for development in environmentally sensitive or hazardous lands. So the appeal for cluster subdivisions is twofold in this case. So first, when you have environmentally sensitive lands, where development should not be placed in certain areas that may be hazardous or needed to be preserved, the developer wouldn't find it advantageous to just reduce the number of lots that they can put on the property due to the fact that a portion of the property is undevelopable. And so they request this cluster subdivision to allow smaller lots grouped together on the portion of land that is adequate for development. So for example, if there's a tract of land that can fit 10 lots that are 6,000 square feet each, a subdivider could request a CUP for a cluster subdivision to preserve the portion of land and then fit the 10 lots into the remaining area. So if the developer couldn't use half of the land for various reasons, then the 10 lots would now become 30,000 square foot lots. That's just a simplified explanation of what a cluster subdivision looks like in practicality. So it's important to note, though, that a cluster subdivision would not be granted for an individual simply wanting to divide their 6,000 or 9,000 square foot lot into smaller lots. So it's intended for larger scale development, typically two acres is the required minimum. Currently, our land use allowed table allows cluster subdivisions in single-family, two-family, and multifamily residential zoning districts. So this would be a lot easier, I could sit down and show you on a map these areas, but I'll just kind of briefly show, describe what this would look like. So in an R1 zoning district, only detached single-family homes are allowed, and the current minimum lot size allowed in R1 is 3,000 square feet for lots south of Phoenix Road, and then 6,000 square foot lots north of Phoenix Road. The approval of a cluster subdivision south of Phoenix Road would essentially allow a subdivider to create development with lots smaller than 3,000 square feet. Then, of course, north of Phoenix, an approved cluster subdivision would allow a subdivider to create lots smaller than 6,000 square feet. So while more lots do mean more housing on paper, the Commission felt that this would not meet the nature of a single-family residential zoning district, especially given the areas where single-family neighborhoods are zoned in the city of Seward. So south of Phoenix would be along properties on First and Second Avenue, south of A Street, and then properties located on Chamberlain, Ravina Vista, and portions of Mill Street above the lagoon. The Commission felt that these smaller lots in these neighborhoods in the R1 districts were not compatible with the comprehensive plan, since it states that sewer residents value the small-town feel, and the city should also manage land use to facilitate economic development while maintaining the historic small-town character of Seward. Then in the R2 zoning district, where detached single-family homes and duplexes are allowed, the same minimum size lots as R1 applied R2, so 3,000 square foot lots south of Phoenix and 6,000 north of Phoenix. However, if you look at a zoning map, there are no undeveloped R2 zoning districts currently, no areas that could be, that could fit the criteria for a cluster subdivision of being two acres or more to be developed. And then also, the minimum lot size required to construct a duplex is 6,000 square feet. So if a cluster subdivision was created in an R2 zoning district, duplexes would not be allowed to be developed. And studies and local data show that the type of housing that Seward is greatly lacking and would have the biggest impact in alleviating the housing crisis are multifamily housing types such as duplexes. So allowing cluster subdividing in an R2 zoning district, which there's currently no available lands to subdivide in Seward, would essentially negate the option for construction of duplexes, which offer affordable renting options for housing. And then in the R3 zoning district, townhouses, condominiums, multifamily homes, duplexes, and detached single-family homes are allowed. So while the minimum square footage still remains the same, 3,000 to 6,000 square feet, there is a minimum square footage requirement of 9,000 square feet for the construction of dwelling units with three to four units, and then additional square footage required for each unit added to that. So similar with the issues with duplexes, these are the type of housing units that would be most beneficial in alleviating the housing crisis in Seward, but would not be allowed in a cluster subdivision with lots smaller than 9,000 square feet. Interestingly, though, townhouses are allowed in R3 zoning district and are also extremely effective solution to solving the housing crisis. But there are already allowances in Seward code that allow smaller lots for townhouses. So a minimum lot width for townhouses is 12 feet in code currently. And a developer would not need to obtain a CUP for a cluster subdivision to build townhouses, as there's already provisions for that in Seward code. So more lots to build single-family homes will eventually aid in the housing crisis. However, the Commission feels that allowing smaller lots than what is already allowed in code would threaten the small-town nature of Seward. Also, there are very few areas in Seward that would qualify for a cluster subdivision, and cluster subdivisions do not support the type of housing that is most needed in Seward today, which are the multifamily units or townhouses. The Commission understands that there are unique development situations and properties in Seward that may require these unique development allowances, and they feel that these situations would be most appropriately addressed through a planned unit development, which is still allowed in city code by CUP, in single-family, two-family, multifamily, auto-commercial, central business, and resource management. And a planned unit development does allow a developer to request smaller lot sizes if needed, but it focuses more on a comprehensive development plan and evaluates all aspects of the development rather than just the lot size.
Okay, thank you. And you'll be around for questions if we come up. Okay. I'll open the public hearing now on Ordinance 2024-009. Mr. Clerk, has anyone signed in?
Nobody has signed in.
Okay, is there anyone out there that would wish to speak to this ordinance? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and now I bring it back to council. And questions, comments? Councilmember Finch?
Yes, ma'am. This ordinance, I think, would work great in Anchorage and Kenai because they have nice flat land, more land. We're limited with mountains. I think we should postpone this until we really delve into, we're limited on land here, so why are we limiting ourselves on building abilities?
Okay, so are you making, are you moving to postpone?
Yes, ma'am.
To the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, there's a motion to postpone to the next meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to postpone this till the next meeting, and now we can discuss postponement. discuss postponement. Vice Mayor Osenga.
I will vote against postponing right now at this time because I have questions that I'd like to ask, and I haven't gotten a chance to do that. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against postponing just yet, just for that reason.
Interesting. Mr. Clerk, are we limited now that there's this motion to only speak to postponement or can we ask questions before we vote on postponement? That's a question for you.
I suppose you could describe like more as to why you want to postpone it without getting too into the details of the ordinance itself.
Okay.
Was there any further discussion about why you wanted to postpone it beyond what you've already said?
I mean, yes, I think this will drastically affect Seward, limiting the amount of space that we have already by limiting, taking something that we could use away. I mean, this worked in Anchorage and Kenai. I can understand enforcing that. They have flat land, plenty more land than we do. We're very limited. We know we have a housing shortage. Why are we limiting our options?
Okay.
We should keep this option on the table.
So...
Oh, just if, if you don't mind, just for the clerk, so the advantage of postponing it to the next meeting would allow for more time to research?
Okay. And those questions could be answered in that interim time or, I mean, this is the discussion and we'll be voting on whether to postpone, so go ahead, Vice Mayor.
No, that's fine. We'll take vote. That's fine. Thank you.
All right. And anybody else have anything to say about postponement? I personally feel we could go either way. It will be a month till we have our next meeting, but this isn't exactly timely in that sense, I guess, if something could be accomplished by postponing. Councilmember Finch.
I would also like to postpone to get Councilmember Wells's input on this.
Okay. Do you have full counsel, perhaps? Okay, are we ready to vote on postponement? And the motion is to postpone Ordinance 2024-009 until our next meeting, which would be July 8th.
July 8th.
Okay, I guess we're ready to vote on that, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, so this vote is just to postpone the ordinance to July 8th. Finch?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Osenga?
No.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
Okay, that motion has passed, and that ordinance is postponed till July 8th.
Okay. In light of that, too, I recommend that if we haven't, if you haven't, that you watch the KNC meeting where this was discussed because a lot of information was given there, too, and you can ask questions. Okay. So, we'll revisit this as a public hearing item again, Mr. Clerk, when it comes back?
So, we've already had the public hearing.
Right.
We could have another one if you'd like to have another one, or we can go straight back to the discussion.
I think I'd prefer to go straight back to the discussion, but...
Okay, so we'll pick up, we'll pick up right where we left off.
Pick up where we are, and then hopefully we'll have more, more. Okay. We'll dispense with that quickly. Now, if I don't get it wrong, we have Resolution 2024-003, which was removed from the consent agenda under new business resolutions. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, Resolution 2024-033, Mr. Clerk, could you please, when you're ready, read that?
Resolution 2024-033, authorizing the city manager to enter into a two-year facility use agreement between the city of Seward and the Alaska Vocational Technical School, AVTEC, for the use of the Student Services Building for public recreation.
Okay, and you'll find that on page 49. I need a motion to approve in a second, please.
I'll move for the approval of Resolution 2024-033. I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Administration, do you have some input on this?
Yes, I have, uh...
You have people.
Right, yes, we have people. I'm gonna have a Parks and Recreation Director, Melanie Haas, come up and speak to this.
Okay. And just give us kind of a brief overview, and then I'll ask Mr. Barnwell to speak to why he pulled it.
Certainly. The Sports and Rec crew have been doing just an incredible job, creating new programming for all ages, events, classes, leagues, tournaments. The list goes on and on. The community benefits from what we offer and are very supportive, and we've received some pretty great feedback. It wouldn't be possible without the use of the AVTEC Student Services Center, the spaces ideal for us to operate out of, and we're actually outgrowing it. The AVTEC contract historically is on a one-year term. During negotiations, AVTEC agreed to extend the contract renewal to two years, and then they increased their fees from $415 to $435 a day. AVTEC provides custodial staff as well, five days work week. When Sports and Rec open on the weekends, our staff complete light cleaning duties, and so that results in a discounted fee of $300 per day. And thanks to plenty of staff, Sports and Rec was able to open seven days a week earlier this year. The months of June, July, and August, we have lower attendance, so we dropped down to five days a week. And in July, we closed for three weeks for maintenance and cleaning. This year, we've seen a spike of 136% in visitors from 2023, comparing the months January 1st to May 16th, and a 65% increase in the days, the days that we operate open. And then, the revenues have increased as well and close to surpassing the 2023 entire year, so.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Barnwell?
Yeah, thanks for coming, Melanie. I just, honestly, I'm a huge fan of Parks and Rec and what you guys have done across at AVTEC and your whole program there, and I really support it. My main, the reason I wanted to pull this is, one, just for you to kind of clarify where you guys are, and I appreciate the lay down here. And I didn't realize that you had that kind of increase in attendance. It's not, actually, it's not that surprising, but it's pretty amazing to look at. And I just, I just think we're getting a heck of a value for our dollar, but when I first saw that, I wanted people to see that it's not just, we're asking for $50,000 more for the remainder of this contract, but what we got out of that is huge, and I'm actually pretty happy that we're going into a two-year contract. I'm glad that AVTEC's happy with what we're accomplishing. Because a year and a half or two years ago, we were looking at a $20 million Parks and Rec building, and what we're getting for a minuscule amount of money compared to that is pretty cool. And I think it's a lot because of your staff, you and your management and your staff. And I go there a lot and watch what's happening, and there's just so many great ideas and programs, and it's really encouraging, so thanks for doing it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, and thanks for that clarification, too. The public wouldn't have heard those statistics probably if we hadn't pulled this. Right. A lot of times that happens where we just vote on something and they don't see the details or hear the details. Are there any other, is there any other input or are we ready to vote? We think we're ready to vote on this, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, voting on the approval of Resolution 2024-033. Finch?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Barnwell?
Yes.
Kreitz?
Yes.
And Mayor McClure?
Yes.
Okay, that resolution is then approved.
Okay, and we have only one other item, and I brought this up. It's to discuss giving a letter of support for officially naming Mount Kenny Baker, and you'll find this on page 85 and 86. And the history of this, it's, I think Harold kind of tells it in his letter, but if you don't know Frank Baker, he grew up here, they used to be neighbors of my folks, a little bit older. He's a poet also, and anyway, a mountain climber. And his dad, Kenny Baker, had a mine and was up in the mountains, and there's a peak up Sawmill Creek. Well, there's a map there. It's off Lowell Point. He would, like, he's beginning the process of naming the peak, Mount Kenny Baker. Apparently, unbeknownst to me, not being an avid mountain climber anymore, a lot of the local mountaineers, I have been calling it that for some time, but to go through the official naming thing, if you recall several years ago, Harold Faust and Dano and a few others got some mountains across the bay named, but it goes through a whole sequence of process. He requested from me a letter from RBHS, the Historical Society, which we provided at our last meeting, and also from the city on our letterhead, which will help to further this. He has quite a batch of personal letters like Harold's here. This was just given as an example. So, what I'm requesting is, if it's okay with Council, that we provide a letter of support from Council for his quest to name this after his father. And if there's any discussion, we can discuss, or just if, I don't know if we need to vote or just verbal nod, I mean, head nods?
Yeah, if there's no objection, then it's fine.
Okay, is there any objection to that? And I have to apologize if Frank is watching this. I kind of dragged this out a couple extra months. I was pretty busy and things, but he had asked me back a few months ago, and this will, we'll go ahead and do this, and I'll get the clerk to send the letter, or we'll get it in the next couple of days. And thank you very much for that. I'm looking forward to hearing how this goes. I imagine if it goes through, like they did across the bay, we'll have a presentation about it and some pictures. We have a group climb up there, but it's quite a thing if you read Harold's letter about it, so. Okay, thank you. And that is, I believe, other than some informational items, that's all we have, and we should be reminded, the public should be reminded, that we voted last meeting not to have our June 24th meeting. We're taking a little break, and so our next meeting will be a month. It'll be the July 8th meeting, so you'll be watching for that. And at that point, we have citizen comments on any subject. This is the five-minute time where you can speak on any subject at all, and there's no sign-in for that. And, oh, is there anyone in the public wishing to speak? And once again, we need to hear who you are because you know we just never get tired of that. But it just goes in the record, I guess. It's important.
First job outside city limits, another interesting meeting, and because it's not very long, I stayed at the end. I had a couple of calls as Chair pack up over the last few weeks that somewhat surprised me, but it kind of brings up something that I'm aware of at my age, and we'll all get there, is there changes inevitable. Things change sometimes to our liking, sometimes not. Several people called me, said they didn't like the potential growth of activity in Seward associated with the cruise business or others, that it impacted how long they had to wait in the grocery store, how long they had to wait on the highway, how long anything took, sometimes unruly tourists, other things. I don't know. I'm particularly a guy that thinks that jobs are important, and if we have problems, it's our responsibility as leaders to find a solution to those problems. And that may be additional services. One of the things that was mentioned was intoxication and its pressure on our hospital facility. We have our public safety department that's been changed in its structure and I don't think sits on ennebriates today like they used to, so they wind up having, going someplace else. Well, we need to find a service of some sort to take care of that problem. I think that's really the function of government. You know, we all agree to get together to try to create a civil society, one that takes care of the weakest of us and makes things better for all of us. If these kinds of complaints come up, and certainly people are gonna say things that are irrelevant, but if there's enough of them comes up, it points to a need. I think we're starting to see that. Carol and I came to this community 11 years after the earthquake. It was a sleepy community. My mentor and guide, Willard Dunham, was shaking his grave to think that we were turning away jobs or any other way of making a living here in Seward. I don't think, I don't think we have to. I think the things that you do today will have great benefit down the road. They may not show up immediately, but they will have a benefit, so stay the course. Things have a wave. I would like to give a kudo or shout, shout out to planning and zoning. I think they really stepped up their game. They're bringing new counsel and advice that I think is really beneficial to the community. I think the fact that you have a proposal tonight that you want to take more time to think about is appropriate, but things, again, change. And I would, I would, again, say that not every solution is exactly the way we're gonna want it, but we'll find a compromise. One other thing, I would like to remind everyone who gets anxious this weekend at the Moose Path Summer Festival, begins on Saturday. We've had a great response, and it's a fun event. It's all volunteers out there. Benefit goes to scholarships, the maintenance of our community building, which provides a public forum for a number of organizations, including our library and others. And it's the 45th running of this event, so hopefully I'll see you out there over the weekend. Okay, thank you.
What time does it start?
As early as you want to get there. I think, I think it's 11 o'clock typically on Saturday.
I just, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the public wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it to Council and Administration comments and responses to citizen comments, and we'll begin with Mr. Bickling.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to just also commend Parks and Recreation just for the job they are doing in our community, and also the other side of them is that they're also maintaining the parks and the campgrounds, and they're, they're really busy right now, so we just appreciate that arm of the city and thank you for them. And I also just want to say our condolences to the family of that person who drowned. We are having discussions on that, about how we can create things like signage, and just, I think it's just help have like awareness over in that area, because actually the city does own that property that's on the southern end of that. And we went and looked over there and just finding ways to create more awareness. Water is, can be dangerous and it can kind of sneak up on you, and so we're looking at just ways we can help do some better messaging on our part, and maybe looking at seeing if the Coast Guard actually wants to have like a kids don't float type of thing over there as well, but just we want to be able to make sure we're doing all we can to prevent those types of situations, so we might be bringing something like that further. But anyway, our condolences are to those families, and this is a tough time of year with just a number of tragedies happening in the last few days here, last few weeks, so.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with Councilmember Kreitz.
I'd just like to thank everyone for the presentations. The work session was very informative.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barnwell?
I'd like to say thanks to Melanie and Russ from Sports and Rec for coming and clarifying where they're, what they're doing, and also Iris Darling and her group. I think it's really exciting that they're, Brown and Hawkins Building's designation is, it's great. And, sorry, I'm drowning. Yeah, finally, the, if you didn't listen to the work session, I think the electrical work session is encouraging. It's, it's a little less money than maybe we thought we were spending, and there's a lot being done. It seems, we have a person, I think, that is, we're in good hands with him, and I think it's exciting to see what we can come up with our electrical utility in the next year or two. That's it.
Okay, Councilmember Finch?
I'd like to thank Brown and Hawkins for doing a very hard, that's impressive. Parks and Rec, keeping the numbers up good, and the water study was quite interesting. I liked seeing that. And my condolences to the family. I know every year we have... And my condolences to the family, I know every year we have incidents happening with fishing, but you got to think about where, how far out you can go, especially in that area. My condolences to the family.
Councilmember Calhoun?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just thanks for all the good information tonight, I look forward to a little more in-depth financial information on the electric infrastructure project, so that we can make some good decisions on how to complete that over the next couple of years. Also, the water in Seward rate study, it'll be interesting to see where those numbers actually come in, and so we can help start planning for that. I think metering is a, is a good thing when it comes to that. Just reminder, obviously Friday is Flag Day. And because of our schedule, the Legion's annual Flag Day ceremony will be held at noon, because doing it on a Friday evening is a little difficult for some of us. So noon on Friday will be our annual Flag Day ceremony for the proper retirement of flags. And Sunday is Father's Day. So for all you fathers, hope you have a great day. And I don't, you know, don't like to do this a little bit, but there will be a Father's Day breakfast at the Legion on Sunday from 9:00 to 11:00, and I think that's all I have.
So far.
So far.
Okay. Vice Mayor Osenga?
Yeah, thanks to all, for all the presentations, all the information that we did receive today, it was pretty informative there. Thank you to the first responders for their, all their efforts this weekend, and congratulations to Iris Darling and the Brown and Hawkins historic accomplishment that they achieved.
That's it. Okay. And I echo all of that, I think, you know, I just, I can't wait to look through all these, this stuff about Brown and Hawkins, because if you've ever been in the basement there, I mean, that's, it's an amazing place, you know, so. Anyway, that's exciting, and congratulations, and I know Iris is very proud of having those official state people here, and I think that's really a good thing. I just wanted to say a couple of things about Lee Polensky Day and Week. There are posters around, and we're putting up a few more, because it's really hard to get the word out in Seward, but his family will be here, and there will be a service on the 20th, it's on a poster, but at 7:00 at the cemetery. And then on the 22nd, from 2:00 to 4:00, the public's invited down to the Branson Pavilion for a dessert potluck and slideshow, and also the dedication of the new bench and statue that Dan Seavey's been here talking about, and it's right down there, it will be. So that's happening, and you'll see the posters. But the other thing I want to say is the thing I'm doing, and I'm, I've picked up from Lee, and I'm going to continue the solstice cemetery walk tour, and I'm doing it just like he did it, 10:30 on the 21st, it will always be the 21st, even if the official solstice might be the 20th. But we're, we're honoring Lee. So at 10:30 at night, meet at the Legion Cemetery there by the flags, and I have a very, very, I think, exciting and interesting tour of some very interesting people. It's amazing what you uncover when you start researching some of the older folks around the past, and, and so I can, I plan to do that, it will take, I've got it timed out, we won't spend more than an hour. He always tried to get us done by 11:30, so we will be done by 11:30 at night. And also, I just came to the realization, because I can't stop talking, apparently, that this is our last meeting until after the Fourth of July celebration, so this is different. Usually, we have one more meeting, but I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July time. It is sort of a midweek celebration this year, and so that might cap things down a little bit, but expect a lot of people here on the Fourth. And I feel that Councilmember Calhoun probably has more to say, you know?
No, ma'am, he's just looking at me.
Okay. So with that, and a happy Fourth of July and Flag Day, I will adjourn us at 8:15.